So I'm assuming we have no petitions, so we'll move right into board management. So if you look on the second page, it has on the bottom longitudinal data for the entire school. Jason, is there anything you want to share about this, either projections or what we're seeing here?
What I did was I took some highlights from the packet that I did, I think over the summer. And just thought I'd go through some quick notes of these. And then if there are questions, obviously, please ask them. And I'll back up. We as a staff went through the data, it took us, because we only had like half an interview day, so it took us a few staff meetings, but we went through this as well. So as far as communication and our professional development plan for this calendar year, I hope you all still get my school messenger emails on the weekends. So pretty proud of that, that's working. And then our PD focus for the year, on September 3rd, and I'll get to this in another slide, we had a PD focus on career tree development with an author and speaker named Mark Perna. So you should really check him out, he's really exciting to listen to and the staff had great feedback. And November 18th, we're going to be trained in youth mental health first aid through the Claire Martin Center. So that continues our kind of year-long piece on understanding students with trauma. And then Perkins Five is new this year, as of July 1st, so there's lots of training that we're going to have to go through as a staff as well to understand what the requirements are. So that's kind of our PD piece for the year. So Mark Perna came September 3rd. His book, Entering Y, he's the founder of TFS Consulting. So he's going to work with us on developing these career trees for all of our programs. And they're based in, if you can picture a tree, and I'll show you a picture in a second, a root system that's based on academics, experiences, and technical skills. And then from that, the body of the tree becomes like the foundation of their program knowledge. And then the branches break out into three different levels. Here, here, and here. So we'll fill in all this information, and this would be foundational program, but each level is where a student can go, sorry, after they complete like our program. So these might be the job opportunities available and the salaries they might make after this first one. But then if they get maybe an AOS or a few more degrees, then they get, this world opens up to students. And if they go to the top, you either have BA or a master's or a PhD, this world opens up to students.
So it's going to be by each program?
By each program.
There's a seat there, man, on this side of this?
Yeah, can I support my neighbor?
Hey there, Linda.
So I'm really excited, the joke around the building is like I turned the pool in on this, and I really have. I read his book over the summer, we follow each other on Twitter, I have extra copies in my office if anyone wants one. They're not all signed, but...
Sorry.
And from this work, so this becomes, we're just getting access to his online learning management system, and then teachers and us will enter in this data, which we already have, just in different formats. It's going to give us a really concise and clear message to recruit from. Because then we're going to get these, these trees, a picture like, a little different, but a little fancier, of this tree, which is like a six by five giant tree that we're going to get to post in the school and all the programs, as well as some of the other PDFs that we can then send to the sending schools and go talk to students about. Plus, it's a big draw for parents, because we're learning how to change our language. And he talks a lot about understanding students and where they are and the difference between the Y and Z generations, and that they're looking for, not necessarily, "I want this career, but I want this lifestyle." And so if we change our vocabulary a little bit, we can tell them how they might be able to get to this lifestyle. That was terrible English, but thank you. So he also talked about bridging this awareness gap, and this is not only for students, but for parents too. So we're really talking about how they get to these high-demand, high-wage jobs. And in 2017, the Department of Labor brought out a study about the economic kind of opportunities, you've seen that report, in Randolph. And so we looked at that as a school on our first assembly as well. So I think it's a great message, we're really excited, I'm really excited. And so this will be a large portion of our professional development this year. And then he has a definition of what a planning culture is, and I thought, you know, this is what we do. This is what we do every day, and we keep readjusting, we really want students to leave with a plan when they graduate high school. And he talks about, you know, college and career should really just be, is every student college-focused, because you, in order to get a job, you still have to go to college or some kind of training, it shouldn't just one or the other. So I find it fascinating. If anyone wants a book, let me know, I'll get you one. Questions so far? I know that's really not part of the data that I have.
That's okay.
We went over our mission statement, which again, and they did this before I got here about five years ago, but this directly relates back to what a planning culture is. So I feel like if we're meeting our longitudinal data, we're also then meeting our mission statement as a school. So this is something that we can always go back to as a true test to see if we're working towards our goals. And so how do we know we're meeting the mission statement? These are our main priorities. IRC attainment, because we know if a student leaves with a certificate, they're more likely to be hired and they're more likely to make a higher wage. CTSO is the Career Technical Student Organization Participation that leads to networking and scholarships. Work-based learning participation, student experience leads to more experience than someone else who gets them a higher wage and a competitive edge. We're always assessed on academic progress, which we'll get to in one second. Math and literacy are still continued this year, science will probably be next year, and my guess is the Agency of Education will use the 11th grade S-Back Science Assessment as part of our assessment as well, even though we don't necessarily work with those students in grades nine and 10. And then post-secondary placement, either in college training or enlistment. And so as we continue to use those measurements in our data, that's also how we know we're meeting the mission statement. Good so far. So work keys, we talked about this in the spring last year, this is one of the ways that we're measured in math and literacy. And so as a reminder, last year, we were the only technical center to pilot work keys in the state, which was good for us, we got big kudos with the Agency of Education for that. We're going to do it again this year, we're going to test all new students in October, and then all students again in May 2020. And so that'll cost us around $4,000, and we use Perkins money for that. But that will give us a true level of data. For new students, it'll be October to May and see if there's growth. And then for returning students, it'll be from last year to May, May to May, to see if there's growth. Scores range from one to seven, or 65 to 90. And a five enables a student to test out of a CCC, CCV graduation requirement. They require students to take work keys as a graduation, as an assessment as a graduate. So if a student gets a five with us and they go to CCV, they wouldn't have to take that, which is, you know, there's some motivation for a student there.
So it's a test that they don't have to pay for out of their own pocket?
Correct.
To get to CCV?
That's a good question, I don't know. That's a good question.
Is there a fee? You mean, do they still have to not take it, but do they still get assessed a fee for it?
I do not know, we wish Kate was here, we'll have to ask her. That's a good, I'll find that out.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay, that's a great question. So as a center, right, we scored 4.25 in math, which came out to roughly, as I added everything up, so there might be, you know, a couple points human error here, 77.5, 4.18 in the literacy documents, and 78.5. Now, what's interesting about this is the Agency of Education has not come back to us and say, "What's proficiency?" Right? My guess is they're going to say five, right? It seems pretty logical if that's what CCV wants. So we're not too far off, I mean, which is good, because it gives us some goals and something to work towards this year.
Do the kids see this as being a meaningful test? Do they work hard to do well on this?
You know, it was great, Carlos is a good example. He, and we talked about this for a few months before, we did this in May, and one of the things we told the students was, you know, "We want you to do well on this, because our funds are tied to this." So if you, and Carlos had this conversation, I remember going into his classroom last year, he brought me in, and we were talking about it as a class, and if they want, you know, the bells and whistles and all this equipment, it's directly related, because if we get our fives, we have more money to spend on the other stuff, and we don't have to spend as much on the math and literacy. And I think once we had this conversation, they seemed to accept it, rather than, I would say, the S-Back, which they don't always accept.
Right.
Right? Did you think, you think they were a little more willing?
Absolutely, they were, they were engaged, and they did the best they could. They stayed, took the whole hour and a half, whatever, and took, and they gave it their best, right? And the last thing is, yeah, I also talked about inheriting traditions, so what you're doing now, going to give gear for the people who are coming up after you guys, so they bought into that, they took it very seriously.
And what's interesting on, so this is scores across programs, right? And I think it's interesting. What's interesting is our bias, you know, so if I thought, man, I never would have thought that the auto group would have scored on an average of a 90. Like, it just never really, you know, knowing who they are, but they bought in, and they stuck with that test to do that. And the same thing with the advanced manufacturing. Knowing who they are last year as students, and all of a sudden, they did really well. And what we talked also about is, in the literacy documents, the reading got just longer by page, and so we know some students, you could tell on their individual scores, just started kind of like, "Ah, I gotta read more of this," and just started to tune out. And you can see how much time they spent versus others were like, "I'm just going to do this," and did pretty well. So it was just fascinating, it's kind of this pilot to go through and see where students Questions so far? And I don't think it's that, it wasn't, it didn't take all day.
What's ERM?
ERM was our forestry program, Environmental Resource Management, and that's the program we folded this year into the diversified act.
The value of the discussions. Yeah, he's got any, you know, because that's the whole purpose behind taking the work data.
And what's also nice is, every student got a report on how they did, and it really explains to the student where they topped out, or where, you know, if you understood this, this is what, so it's like this personalized report that we handed out.
Is this sort of basic skills in math and reading?
You know what's nice is, it's like, it's start, it's one to five, or one to seven, so one is pretty basic, seven gets a little more complicated. I don't think it tops out at pre-calc, probably Algebra II. But there are, the students applied what they have learned, and they take this more as they connect with its assessment. So a basic one might be, "And gave Paul $20 change for a $1.50 cup of coffee, how much is change, you know, how much change is that?" And so progressively gets harder. There aren't that many questions, I want to say 35 questions possibly in the math. And so, but at least a student feels like, "Oh, I understand that," versus some, maybe a little more random kind of math or literacy concept.
X plus three.
Right. Right, but yet there's algebra in there, but it's in a word paragraph, right?
Right, that solves the problem.
Exactly. So it's interesting.
So is this state sort of, or who's asking you to do this?
The Agency of Education.
Vermont's agency?
Vermont's Agency of Education, that if we want to use Perkins funds, the state has to show federal agencies.
Confidence.
How we are assessed in math and literacy. And since the 11th grade math and literacy went to ninth grade, this is kind of their answer right now.
I see, okay. And wasn't this, some of the employers were pushing this too?
Well, so there's the math, and then there's the literacy assessments, and there's one more, and it's about graphing, if you could read graphs. And if you get a certain score on all three, you get like a certificate that you could show to businesses that you're...
To say I'm employable.
Employable. However, I don't know how many businesses in Vermont would take that and really say, "Yes, you are." I don't, most of them would be like, "I don't know what this is." Probably a hundred of them.
Yeah, because I remember hearing about this probably two or three years ago.
Right.
And it was, CCV was doing a course or offering a class.
Remember they did that college readiness class?
Yeah, but it wasn't in the college readiness, it was in, it was workforce development. So, but I like this, so how come you're not using a graphic?
Because I'm reluctant to do, just for that reason. I'm reluctant to invest in a lot of that other, that third wheel, which I feel like is pushing our luck a little bit. And for a certificate that won't mean anything to anyone except paying more to ACT.
But if that takes off and everybody around the state starts using it?
I'd like to see that first, absolutely. Because that was the same, to me, some of the same issue with the career readiness class, was that then you got the certificate from the governor that said, "Your work ready," but none of the industries bought into it. And so I just feel like, hmm, I want to see it happen first. Okay, so Perkins evaluation, going back to our data and our mission statement. So now we're held to Perkins Five. The AOE is still developing the statewide plan, which then they have to go through open meeting and public comments. So we don't have all the information yet, but my best guess is, these are the main items. We know math and literacy, science in 2021. IRC attainment will be one of them, we earned over 400 last year, so we did a great job. Dual enrollment, we were a little bit down, I think we wanted to be at 25%, and we were at 23%. And my reasoning for that is the health careers program didn't do dual enrollment last year. So that would have been our 2%. Work-based learning, we had over 103 guest speakers, 56 students participated in work-based learning, 18 child shadows, 71 total placements. So I feel good about everything else. And just, it's always good to grow too, right? So we're not stopping, these are our focal points. And then this is how we spend Perkins. So this year, we have $137,000. Roughly $9,000 goes to the consortium, so that we help pay for the teacher prep program, as well as the statewide CTSO. This is the money we spend for our math teacher, which goes towards the math portion of Perkins. We love Tannenbaum, she was our UVM Teacher of the Year, she's an awesome teacher. She's teaching the EMC squared math that PISA promoted, and has, I think, 10, 11 students, and it's going great so far. What else? Language arts support in our academic center. We have $22,000 for equipment this year. The $23,000 helps us pay for the Mark Perna who came, and that was $16,000. And then we do a challenge day with Vermont Works for Women, and that's $7,500. And this year, though, we're targeting middle school girls rather than ninth and 10th grade. Okay? To try and also meet the AOE's request to push outreach further in the middle school. So that's where we're going to start. And then industry IRCs, we have $25,000. So, all right, and then this is kind of out of the data range, going back to the agenda, but enrollment, and this is our current enrollment as of last Thursday. One Lamoil is not really unusual for us, that's pretty far, so that's a good for us. Northfield's a little low, and really, it's low from last year. Randolph, we had a large senior class department in Randolph, and we had five U32 students slated, and three did not come at all, they're not even going to attend on the first day. So this is where we are, about 131. Five total students didn't show on the first day, and one, who was here last year, went back to Williamstown last week. And then one student told me he's moving to Florida in two weeks. Can't stop that.
Yeah, that's quite a bit, I thought we were way up, like 140-something.
Well, but also remember, we have zero in the business program, and the ER, the forestry program moved to Ag.
Moved, right.
You know, so for last year, we had 13 programs, and this year, we have 11. Even if there were eight, that would get us in each closer to 140.
Yep.
Working on the pre-tech for this year.
Right. And we can use the pre-tech numbers in our count, which will help a little bit, but that's more for stability. I think that is it. Yeah, so that's my longitudinal data report.
All right, so the new program is the advanced manufacturing, right?
We're in our second year, yes.
Right, second year, and so how is it going, how's it look projecting for this school year and for next?
Great, I think, I think we have 11 or 12.
All right. Yes, it says 11.
11, right? Yep. Which is really good, as a second-year program, considering where we are. We have one returning, two returning students into that program. Two returning from last year.
And the rest are all new.
The rest are all new.
It is, yeah.
All right.
So we're excited about that. And that money, remember, we had grant money to start the program, and then we had another second grant for $59,000 last year to continue to build it for this year.
Did they get the plasma cutter running yet?
Almost.
It's like it's a neat toy.
With some of these programs, I see that it's trending down.
My, the, the one...
Any concerns?
Yeah, I'm concerned about our graphic arts program. We have four students in it right now.
Not one's interested.
Usually pretty full, and that's also from, three of the U32 students were in that program, so that took just a big hit. And then one student transferred already from there to another program. So that, that's my biggest worry right now.
Is there any way, you know, I know it's the beginning of school and everything's already started, but is there any way, when things are down like that, to go back to your sending schools and say, "Did anyone reconsider this over summer?"
Yeah, we actually had a visitor today from Williamstown who visited digital film and in graphic arts. So, and my hope also is, the career trees will really give us a different kind of message.
Yeah.
So we like to see that. Rutland, Stafford Technical Center in Rutland, they also participate in this, and they said they're at maximum capacity now that they've started to use this program.
Hmm, that's good.
Yeah.
So seeing as you're down to 11 programs, is that something that you're looking to add, a different, another program in the years to come, or is that still sort of under?
Well, I think the tricky thing is timing, right? So in the forestry program room, where we had the forestry program, we put pre-tech in there right now. And I don't want to, I feel like if I move them again, I can, but I'd also like to have some continuity in space there. And that room works well for them because of the size, it's one of our smallest rooms. At the same time, I would like to at least get up to one more program next year. And the question is really, where do we put that? If we're not running business next year based upon that we had no students this year, and I don't know if we can really rally around that again.
No students.
We have no students. That gives us a space. But that also then means there's only certain programs that can go in that space, because of where it is and how it's connected to the rest of the building. It's more of a classroom space than I would say a shop space. I think our, the state's focus and the governor's focus on cybersecurity, which we put into our criminal justice program, healthcare, transportation, you know, we already have some of those. I think we could support a second health careers program and do something completely different, but I also worry a little bit about, is there a continuous flow for that? Could I get 16 every time? Could I get 32 every single time? We might. So those are some of the questions I think we really need to ask students.
Yeah.
Not only what would you sign up for, but what are we missing? I think electrical's been talked about.
Yeah.
And I'd rather do electrical than HVAC. I feel like there's a little more sell on electrical than HVAC. But again, you would need a certain kind of classroom for electrical, it wouldn't fit where business is right now, from just a facility standpoint. And I don't see anyone moving like...
But maybe a cybersecurity might.
Well, I think that's already in our criminal justice program. We, for the past two years, Mr. Lacy's already taught some of that. We've done the Girls Go Cyber. The other grant we got last May has specifically to help implement that. And so we're working with VT VLC right now to do an introduction to cybersecurity course with them. We bought another software curriculum called NCASE, which is a cybersecurity program. And we got extra computers through this grant as well. So I feel like that one's already in there, to do a standalone wouldn't be beneficial.
Okay, makes sense. Will you be looking at sort of what employers are saying they need?
Right, and so...
Education that's not quite a college associate's degree?
Right, and so the governor's talking construction trades, which we have.
Right.
But I do think electrical might be, it's different.
It is.
Right? Cybersecurity, healthcare, transportation, Ag, that's what the governor's focusing on.
When they say transportation, is it the auto?
It's the big, I think it's the big umbrella.
Yeah. Nothing in computers is computers?
They do, they want advanced manufacturing, and they call computers cybersecurity. My biggest fear with that, though, as a K through 12 district, we don't do a lot of computer technology, K through 10. And so for me to implement something after that, there needs to be some education before that for students to get excited about. Otherwise, I don't think it would work.
Yeah, and it petered out.
Right.
And before, it seems like when you look at employment, a lot of stuff has to do with computers. But there's also a lot of healthcare.
And we can touch on, much like, I feel like we can touch on computers across the board, you know, so a student might take advanced manufacturing, get a lot of computer work, and maybe they do criminal justice and still get a lot of computer work. You know, it touches across many different fields, it's not just a Cisco program kind of thing.
Right, right.
And I think with the apps and programs being so much more user-friendly, all the, you know, people are learning just what they're doing and not necessarily how to get to it.
That's true.
And what's hard about computers is, you know, if, because we work on a slow-paced education in some respect, that's slower timeline, for us to invest in something today and try to have three years of that technology...
Two years.
Two years, it's already obsolete, and to try and keep up with that pace is really difficult.
And expensive.
Yes, right. And so how do we, whatever we want to bring in, should be somewhat economically viable for us as well. We do know, you know, that, I was, you know, a few weeks ago, I was listening to the radio right before school started, and like on the point, Central Mont Medical Center, if you have an LNA, $5,000 signing bonus. That's pretty good. And a lot of the hospitals in the area now are starting their own training programs to help people move up, which is fantastic, right? That's a debt saver, if you really think about it. So if we can get students to a particular point in either medical assisting, CCV starting some wonderful certificates, that we might be able to do, a student might be able to do two years with us in healthcare, in health careers, two different fields, and then that would give them enough college credits to do one more year at CCV or Norwich or...
Yeah, that's a promising.
Recruitment, a list of all the IRCs, the same work keys data is there.
Does anybody have any questions about the other information that's in there? I assume that was your complete director's report, or?
Um, I could go into the, I did not include anything, I don't think, from the director's report.
Okay, do you want to?
Sure. So Melissa Kill's our new health careers teacher, she's jumped right in, doing a fantastic job. I think we are past all of last year, and she's just hitting it right on the head of the nail, however we want to say it.
And she got that old people last year too, which was good.
And so because she's come from different, she just has a tremendous amount of context as well. So she's going to have some students do some job shadows on the med surg unit and radiology and some just fantastic things. And just so you also know, last year when we left, 10 out of the 12 had passed their LNA, but then over the summer, we got the other two to pass. So we got 12 out of 12. They just needed one more test, like one more skills try, they were just nervous.
So is health careers just a one-year program now?
Well, it's, in a way, it always has been. You know, they get their LNA, that's the primary focus. We have two students who have returned. One is taking anatomy and physiology online, and the other's starting to co-op. And we're going to still work with them to explore what direction they want to go.
Okay, but it's primarily designed as a one-year, that's why a second program would complement that.
Right, and we, right, and we wouldn't have to necessarily say, "You have to do this one first or that one." We can really separate it out and say, "You did this one, if you're still interested, you can do that one," rather than making one higher level than the other. Craig Fuller started our pre-tech program. So he's in the old forestry room, he's working with seven RU students right now. He's doing, I think it's period one, forgive me, I'm not fully sold on what their schedule is. And then he has period two as well. Okay, so five students in one period, I think that's Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then two students Tuesday, Thursday, and there's another day in there, right? And then he does that with us half of the morning, and then he gets his contractual lunch, and then he goes to Williamstown, and he has two blocks with them from 1:00 to 3:00. And so he has students, a group of students Monday and Thursday, the same group, and then a different group Tuesday, Wednesday. And what we've realized from this is, that group at Williamstown, they're looking more for just an elective and extended learning opportunity, so we've scaled back a little bit. And here, students are looking for a course, a class. And so this will run for, both will run for a semester, and then we'll change over for second semester. The goal is, we're doing hands-on math and science STEM activities, hands-on, and then with that, students are connecting, what proficiency did I get out of this? What careers are available? Here's my list. And then if I'm interested in that career, let me help develop a plan. So what math might I need if I'm interested in becoming a civil engineer, and how do I do that? Since they're mostly eighth, ninth, or 10th graders, they can start to actually track that out and see what they need to do. So again, it kind of goes back to that Mark Perna thing, what lifestyle do I want, and how do I get there? And so we've created like this workbook journal for them, where they also are clicking on, if I'm interested in this career, what's that salary and range in education look like, and how do I obtain it? And then we ask them to kind of pull it all together. We're only in our second week. We started September 4th. So we're building it slow, but I feel like it's the right direction to go. We're hoping that Northfield will want to sign on also for second semester.
It's open to eighth, ninth, and 10th graders, 10-year mixing, the-
Right now, we don't have any eighth from RU. We only have ninth and 10th, but they're mixed, because it's easier for their schedules, right? So it's pretty exciting. So far, good reports. Students look jazzed when they're leaving, and they're excited to come down, so.
That's good.
We had new student orientation night on the day before, two days before school started. That seems to be a continued success of just getting parents in the building as well. You know, most of the students by that time had been in their building at least three or four times on tours or different events, but it's really aimed at the parents as well, so they can see the school and meet the teacher, get the syllabus, have an understanding and see, oh, this is where my child is going to spend five hours a day, so we like it. We continue to do program support team. We had one today. That's our math, English program teacher, myself, guidance, work-based learning, and student services. All meeting together, discuss students on academics, relationships, attendance, and see where they are in technical skills. Let's see, we, so far, pretty good at cellphone free, only during lunchtime. Seems pretty good. So far, it's working.
In my class.
In your class. There's some evidence.
Are you doing that lock, lock it up, say it again?
Most of the programs are. I'd say, I have it in my bag over there, I'd say like maybe eight out of 11. The ones that aren't, have the system that's working for them, and that's already in place, so why rock that boat?
And at lunchtime, do you see them suddenly pulling them out and spending a lot of time with them?
You know, it's interesting, our lunchtime changed this year, so we're at 11:30 to 11:55, and everyone thinks it's too long, which is fascinating to me. I know, and it's only like three minutes. Three minutes more than over. There are some students that are still fully engaged, like they're, that's what they're doing. But for the most part, I'd say it's a balance. I'd say it's a balance. Some of them are just looking at stuff together.
Yeah.
And some videos are laughing, but they're still social. I think it'd be really hard to police not having a lunch.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that'd be difficult. But it's, it seems to be working, and it works better because we started on day one versus the middle of the year.
Because middle school doesn't have that much time.
I know, I know that. Yeah.
They haven't got one complaint yet.
No?
That's because my son has high school lunch three days a week, so he can use his phone. He has Spanish class this year, so that screws his lunchups.
Right.
He's eating with the high schoolers, so he can use his phone.
Yeah, I bet the middle schoolers complained, but maybe not the parents.
Yeah, I haven't heard a beat.
I haven't heard any students really complain, which, which I think is, I don't know, it's interesting. I think they knew it was coming. We put in the summer letters.
It's a great move from a parent's point of view.
I think from an employee point of view. I feel guilty, I stand in the hall sometimes checking my emails, and I feel guilty, which I think is good, right? That as adults, we can also be aware of what we're modeling.
And when it's stated, do you, do you sort of talk about just the addictive nature of these devices that they have?
Not yet. You know, South Burlington had these amazing posters that they put up, and just saw it on Twitter, but of, you know, when you're using your phone, are you aware of you're either disrupting a class or not listening intently to someone? And there was one more message, and I thought it was a nice way to phrase it to the student to not, rather than just this kind of put your phone away kind of thing.
Right, right.
Which always moves.
Yeah. But, you know, because I think right now it's just accepted, I think we're okay. And what the hard part is, we also want them to use their phones properly for their digital portfolio, or for these other things, and so how do we balance that? Especially on field trips, where as a staff, we're just, we had this long discussion like, but you go on a field trip, what do we do? Do we want them to listen to it on the bus? Because all these other pieces that are connected. So, it's interesting.
And it can be a great tool.
It can be. But what we found last year, though, was the students, who not necessarily were addicted the most, but who had the most reaction to their phone, were getting messages that disturbed their day and they couldn't reset. And we're seeing less of that right now, already, in seven days.
Well, I think it's important because it opens a discussion about it. So often, we just take it for granted, oh, we can't take, we can't take the phone away from the kid, right? But here, you know, it's engendering a discussion that's worthwhile about the value and the problems that these devices cause. So I think that in and of itself is important.
And also the value and to act, to get kids to actually think about, in a career sense, of being tethered to their phone for their job. What does that mean if you're stuck on your phone for work?
Right.
For an extended period of time? How does that affect the rest of your life?
It's fascinating. You know, I thought parents would be more upset than having received any-
Well, it's, that's encouraging.
I found, so my own kids go to Montpelier, and they started the yonder where the case. And so a few weeks ago, when the Capitol shut down, the school shut down, I was like, oh, I should text my kid. And I was like, wait a second. You know, I had to take that, my whole little step back. And then also realize, hopefully their phone's put away. So it was, it was a good check. What else? We did purchase a new truck last year. Not sure if we knew that with surplus funds.
Yeah, the one you showed me, the one was just sad.
Yeah, that, that thing.
Nothing else? Lane, did you have anything you want to share for this, for this time?
Probably more on the facility side of things. So the, there's the green space that's out there now that the Raven Building has been removed, which is technically RTCC space. It might be worth starting a discussion about, you know, how, what the possible uses could be. And that kind of connects into the other thing that was in the superintendent's report is, we've got two buildings, we've got the shed here, the RES shed that they use for storage, and you've got yours that's adjacent to the new green space there. The problem was is that they didn't use the right fasteners on the metal roofs up there. Actually, I was actually surprised that they were actually driving the nails that they use through the metal roofs. It's not usually how you do it. But the freezing and thawing cycles have been causing the nails to lift out. So it's either, you know, we replace the roofs, or decide to do something else with the building. And so that's a discussion for this year, maybe talking with folks. This one, obviously, we're going to preserve. That one, you know, do we want to renovate it? Do we want to get rid of it? Is it still useful? Part of it is, you know, it'll be costly to replace the roof, which is fine, but it's not, it's a dirt ground on the inside, so you know, you're thinking about a storage space here, dirt ground. And then it's barnboard, you know, there's gaps between the boards. It was built that way on purpose. So how good it is at actually keeping things preserved, I don't know. So just kind of things to throw out there, but, okay.
And where the, do you remember where that climbing structure was a few years ago? So that, that's been gone, I think, at least three years, but we're starting work on a pavilion there. So we're going to try and use the same cement post, there's cement posts there that were gone, and use those posts and build a nice size for them, not too big, but that not only the school can use, but community when it's there. And hopefully Monday, maybe next year, put a pizza, outside pizza.
Now that's floodplain, um, do we know?
Well, it'll be the opposite end, so you know where the high tunnel is? It's closer to the high tunnel than on the riverside. On the driveway side, if that's easier. And on the riverside.
So we'll be up a little bit from that lower field, or are you going to be down in that lower field?
No, we're still further up towards the parking lot than, than, and that doesn't tend to flood right now either. Hasn't yet.
Right, I'm trying to remember when Irene came through. I know the lower field got-
Wiped down.
Oh, a lot of water.
And then with the high tunnel, we'll start our CSA again, and we have a permit for that high, for the pavilion as well, so we'll put a cement floor as well.
So they weren't concerned?
Didn't seem like it.
I was distracted during Irene by other roads.
Those are the kind of highlights, Shannon.
Any highlights or financials you want to discuss?
It's early. I mean, you know what, I'll, I mean, it's not directly related, but we got an extra $122,000, right, for the pre-tech. $61,000 for cybersecurity and the advanced manufacturing, and an extra $20,000 equipment.
Is this grant?
It's all grant money I was able to get in the, from last, some of it started last year and this year. And that's on top of the 131, 137 for Perkins.
And not too much stuff that you have to track in order to-
I feel really bad for Robin, because she has to track it, and they keep changing that, but I try and give her really comprehensive information, since she's so wonderful work with, and she's always on top of it. It works. She's excellent, right?
So it's not constraining you?
No, no, I love doing that because I want the extra money. It really allows us to do things that we might not be able to do, so.
And he's in the, in terms of the overall budget, we had talked a little bit last year about the tuition, how the tuition compensates when the numbers are down in terms of the enrollment. So the money that we get from the state to kind of help out, it comes from a rolling six-month, six semester average, and we were looking at it today with Robin. Out of the six semesters that are currently going into the average, four of them were low. So we're just hitting the new higher level from last year, the 147 that we had, but the middle four were anywhere between 130 and 112.
147 last year, so we're down, what is it, that?
You know, and I think-
Still higher than, looking back over, yeah.
I think what that adds to is a larger discussion of, I don't know if we can support 13 programs anymore, right? You know, there's, there's one piece of saying, well, sure, we want 13 programs, but if they all have six or eight in them, that might, might not be it.
Right, financially viable, yeah.
Right.
And the pre-tech may have an impact, too, as the students are getting in and getting a feel earlier on in terms of what their choices are, as they're going up through the grades, so.
You know, as we get closer to recruitment time, there'll be some major decisions about next year in staffing and enrollment.
And the business piece is interesting, because that was going out everywhere. I think we're one of the last ones that's still-
CC, CBU still has a business, Essex has a part-time, but these, those are also not in the tech centers, those are in the high schools.
High schools, yeah.
But the majority of the business programs in the tech centers aren't left, which is a shame, because 12 credits of dual enrollment and the fantastic work they do in the competitions, and, I mean, they were doing some great things.
Robin said everything looks good in terms of the budget for you guys. Just got no, no concerns, so.
The only thing on the consent agenda is the minutes, which, um, it'd mean Jason and Lane are the only three that were here. I didn't see anything. Not sure how that works. Can we still vote on that with, with who we have?